I'd like to call this board meeting to order and appreciate everyone coming out. Just want to remind you to silence your cell phones. I'm getting feedback.
I can do that. It's all mine. You're good.
All right, and I want to welcome everyone here. And right now, we're going to observe a moment in this house. All right, thank you. Let's stand for the question.
I think it's to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have the approval of the agenda. Did you read it forward? Any changes? Or can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, you heard the motion. All in place, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have citizens' comment here. If I can't read your name or pronounce it, I'll just say your first name and your address. Some of it I can't read. All right, we have Sam Beeks first up. Everyone, you'll be given three minutes. Mr. Tucker will be...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board supervisors. My name is Sam Beeks. I've been a resident of Bedford County for about 25 years. I live in the Boonsborough area of Bedford County. And in an area that we will refer to as Autobahn. We are here to ask if you have any consideration in helping to bring the high-speed internet into our homes. First, we'd like to thank the board and supervisors for driving this critical initiative. Feeling this void will enhance the quality of life and exponentially grow the potential of each and every resident. Current, we face extremely high-cost, low-speed internet, underperforming service, and at times, no service at all. This limits our ability to educate our children, work from home, secure our homes, simply enjoy the benefits of communicating outside of our homes. But I know that each and every one of you are aware of those circumstances. What it related story that I thought was rather interesting relates very much to what we're talking about tonight. I have a son that grew up in Boonsborough. At college and grad school, he worked for a high-tech firm in Burlington. And interestingly enough, that firm is working to provide high-speed internet to the US Senate. During COVID, he found that he could work from home as well as he could from the office. And he decided that he wanted to come back to Virginia and to come back to where his roots. So he looked at Boonsborough, which is where he grew up. And he only had one thing that he couldn't cover, and looking for home. And that was high-speed internet. He couldn't work, and his feel and the firm that he worked with without it. He looked, and he looked, and he looked throughout the Boonsborough community for no good value. So he ended up buying a house in Lynchburg, which I thought was a great loss for people like that not to be a member of the Bedford County community. So the question that I think that each of you would ask is, why us? And why would you give the ability to gain high-speed internet to us? First and foremost, we want to be a vital part of maximizing the potential of Bedford County. We want the county to become one of the most attractive destinations for retirees to work at home for different families and to enhance our residents' ability to maximize their technological capabilities. Second, and probably most importantly, Autobahn is within 300 yards of the cable that is now in brown. And that has been funded for the group that has services across 501. From a cost standpoint, we have... Is that... I'm out.
Take 15 more seconds.
From a cost standpoint, we have close access approximately. We're some of the Lynchburg suburban area that reaches, getting internet there will reach more people than any other place. We have approximately 30 properties that could be reached within a one or two mile area of cable. Lastly, high-speed internet unleashes our growth potential, enhances their property value, and grows their tax base. So we ask if you have any consideration, if you ask if we'd be able to partner with the county to bring your vision alive, to beat that critical lead and drive progress for those who desperately need it in this area. Thanks for that time.
Mr. Chair, I suppose you bring the question. Here, Jason from Oakley, Berlin.
Hi, my name is Jason Camus. I recently moved to Oakley, Berlin. And one of my biggest challenges was finding a high-speed internet service that was capable of filling our needs as a family. I have three children, two are in school, I have a niece, wife, who's a nurse who works from home. So that's been a whole great challenge. And Brisnet was supposed to be a solution, I think, in that area. And it's only a mile away from there and they'll have access to that. So you're representing that family, that neighborhood to try and get high-speed internet so that I need to build our family out of some...
Thank you. Lawrence Farlowe.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Farlowe. When we first moved to Autobahn Drive in Bedford County in August of 2018, we originally relied on Verizon Wireless, which was barely adequate and extremely expensive. Now, I work from home and have been working at home for over 20 years as a corporate recruiter. But I had to cut back on my internet tools that I was accustomed to using due to the lack of reliable high-speed internet services at home. This is my wife, Sue. She's an associate professor at University of Lynchburg. She requires reliable high-speed internet service at home for streaming meetings and teaching classes when COVID restrictions prevent in-person classes. This is my daughter, Gia. She's an eighth grade student at New Covenant. She requires reliable high-speed internet access to complete her school assignments in a timely manner. And I anticipate that this will only increase as she starts high school next year. In March of 2020, when the whole family was suddenly required to work online due to COVID restrictions, we were really limited on what we could do. So we were really happy when we heard Bedford County support of the Brisnet Internet Service for our area. We were one of the first families to sign up, I made a point of that, for this service. But we came to really become disappointed to find out that the service was unreliable. We've never received the speed of reliability to allow two computers to function adequately while online. Brisnet has responded to our calls and tried to remedy the problem on three different occasions with no success. At this point, we have no other options for internet services. And so our original Verizon Wireless service is no longer available in our area. Our neighborhood community lacks high-speed reliable internet. And we clearly have a need for such a service. We would appreciate the opportunity to have the fiber-opted service offered by Zytel installed in our area. The small expansion of the service in our community would have a tremendous impact for our families and our neighbors who also have similar needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bob Platt.
Good evening. We thank y'all for taking time to listen to us. I know you've had a long day. You're doing two meetings in one day, it looks like. I'm probably one of the oldest neighbors in Autobahn for the 30 years. We've been in the dark ages for 30 years. We love to get out. We've tried everything. It's come along. The Brisnet sound fantastic. 25 megabytes is what they're advertised. I measure my speed in kilobytes. I was one of the first ones to install it as well. We wanted to offer something to help y'all, to partner, to give us direction, or bring us together somehow. I put together several things. These are our talking notes. We presented most of them tonight. Nobody did that with you. Also put together a map. Clearly shows what Sam said, about 300 yards from the cable you ran from the tower at Boonsborough Elementary School down to Hawk and Rock Road. I don't know if y'all can maybe, all of you know, but it's just across 501 North from us at Autobahn Drive. So there's several ways to access it. It goes to the telephone poles underground. Either way, be at us. If you go a mile and a half, you have access to 30 homes. That seems like a great opportunity for everybody. And fiber, we all know, is the way to go, pretty much. Anyway, I know it's a hard lesson. We're all learning that. But that is what we're hoping to convince, to partner with you on. The last thing I'm going to leave is a complete list of our neighborhood homes, contact information, and a map on the map showing where everybody is. However, that's helpful. We'd like to just keep it confidential, I'll leave it with you. My name is on there for a contact person. Charlie Prior does on there. I don't know if my name rings a bell, but he was a past president of PDX. And he sends his regrets for not being here. He's at another board game. So we're available to be contacted and come. I'm going to use my last minute or so to just relate a little bit of irony in all this. You may have heard the company's name, Cloudfit Lynchburg. They came there and made a nice foothold, a footprint in downtown Lynchburg. They're making their national and international headquarters in Lynchburg, Virginia. Tapping the local county from schools and colleges and universities there. So Cloudfit people, and I know we're a little biased, we think we have one of the most desirable places in Lynchburg and Bedford County to live. But Cloudfit people, one of the executives went all around Lynchburg looking for a place to build or live. One trip out of Autobahn Drive and they bought Robert. One was building them off the main, as I would say. Company Cloudfit is a Microsoft 365 networking company, one of the premier internet companies of the world right now. Where they work, they got gigabytes of speed.
15.
And obviously, when he comes home, he's got the same thing we got, kilobytes. So they have asked us, please implore you to figure out, if you can, or help us to figure out, how we can get out of the dark ages. We thank you so much for listening to us. And we want to all say God bless you for all the things you've done for us in Bedford County.
You're going to leave copies of that for Bridget here. She... I assume you're...
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to make sure that Robert, if you don't always have the contact information with the gentleman who has had issues with Brisnet or anyone who's had issues with Brisnet, maybe you could have that, get their information that may be helpful in the future.
Yes, sir. We could use the sign-up sheets in order to get that. Or we could talk to him. And I think if I can just interject, I mean, we do have some broadband projects that we've submitted some grants for. This area is certainly something that we would look at. And we can certainly talk to Zytel about, I know that they'd want to expand their footprint in that area. And we can certainly engage in that conversation if you ever have to.
All right, since I told Bob he couldn't say anything, do you want to say something else?
No, I think I'm clear on everything.
Okay, Ashley from Bedford.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Ashley Andrews, and I work for the Bedford County Nursing Home. When I started working in August 2019, Paul Puff, our administrator, gave a speech about integrity. What one does when no one is looking. That is why I'm here tonight. I have spoke with Amanda, Robert's assistants, but I feel that it needs to be heard by others. Our administration has failed us and our residents. As many as you may know, we are dealing with very short staff. And due to decisions made upon administration and for the overall need of the building, the staff members' schedules are being changed, in which five of states happen to be non-vaccinated. Transportation, maintenance, scheduler, and administrative assistants have been affected by the change. However, the shortage in needs are in nursing, which is not being affected by the changes. Staff shortage and needs are greatly needed in the nursing department. We are very concerned with incidents going behind the building that are just being swept under the road. Examples are doctor's orders not being followed and complete. Patient care and needs not being met. The ongoing insect and bird issue that is affecting our kitchen, residents' bedding and living space, the black mold in the bathrooms and around the hand washing stations and ceilings. This is a great concern in safety and health for our residents and employees. There's no leadership. Our employee morale is at an all-time low. Non-medical staff is receiving private HIPAA medical information. Staff members not following visitor protocol by allowing non-compassionate care visitors and children to visit in the building without proper screening or mask being worn. Our administrator also arrives between 9:00 AM and next time leaves room four. He is out of the office most Fridays and never seen out of the office to be available for our staff. Every time our state inspectors come in the building, he is never in the building. And the last time our inspector came in, he also made the comment how he wasn't there either. Another concern is a member of our team is using the county vehicle daily for personal use. When the vehicle is needed by the other staff members, it's unavailable due to not being at work or a child's safety seat buckled in a passenger seat. You can check the gas logs from last year to this year, and I'm sure they will speak for itself. Also, the county home vehicle, that is the only vehicle that we do not keep our paper mileage log on, but we do the others. As of today, we currently have three COVID outbreaks in which the COVID unit is not fully stocked and prepared for when it hits. When breakouts happen, the protocols are not followed and initiated. The last breakout, I personally worked myself, and the only cleaning supplies we had to use were spick and span, nature's way odor carpet cleaner, chloroxide, and a vacuum. Our ice was brought back in grocery store bags, knives we use for the coolers and taking of our patients. Several staff members have not been properly fit at bar N95s. And if you speak with the staff, they're willing to speak with you as well. Proper infection guidelines have not been followed. When our staff provided testing to the Bedford County employees, our nurses did not wear the N95 shields, gowns, and gloves when tested for the COVID-19. That could have caused another outbreak in our facility due to many of those employees tested positive. After the testing were done, the nurses went back and provided care to our patients with only a surgical mask. Many staff members are afraid to talk and come for it in fear of retaliation, as I and some of our employees have had to suffer. So many are willing to speak and wanting to talk without administration at present. I'm asking you to please go into Bedford County Nursing Home, listen to every staff member individually, each department, as well as our residents, because I'm only one voice speaking for so many. Our residents are suffering and the needs are not being met, and this is not acceptable. The Bedford County Nursing Home has a mission statement. To provide the best quality of care, enhancing our residents' quality of life, healthy environment, which is the closest thing to home. Now, let's get Bedford County back on board with that mission and central best kept secret, the senior eleven, but still in the right way. We're asking for your help, Ashley, and any employees from Bedford County Nursing Home.
All right, and I would like to insert for the record that our staff is aware of this and they're open to this. It's not a surprise to us. So we're checking both sides of the call.
Absolutely. And like I said, there is many employees who are willing to speak. It's just nobody's in the building. We have done several things. This past week, I am one of the employees that they tried to change my schedule.
We got to end there because I have to give everybody five minutes.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for this opportunity, and I hope you guys take the effort and do what it is to do. Appreciate it.
Okay, next is Joey Carey.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to tell my story, how the vaccine has affected my family. My daughter was an active, healthy, young, vibrant college student until she took both doses of the vaccine. After receiving her second dose, we had to rush her to the emergency room because she came very ill. She was very ill. She had blood clots in her stool, as well as coughing up blood clots, and vomiting everything that she ate. Before my daughter took the vaccine, she had no underlying conditions. She was fine, enjoying life, enjoying her junior year at college. Since then, my daughter has lost 37 pounds. She was 140 pounds, she got down to 109. She couldn't keep her food down, and she had sharp pains in her sides. My family and I have experienced death, sickness, and unknown illnesses as a result of taking the vaccine. My biggest concern now is that they are pushing a mandatory vaccine for children five to 11 years old. And my son is part of that. He attends Bedford County Public Schools. After seeing the destruction that these three vaccines have done to four members of my family, I do not have confidence in this vaccine to be allowed to give to my son. There are some people who can take the vaccine and some who can't. We don't know who they are until they suffer from debilitating side effects that could last who knows how long and for what extent. Based on my personal experience about the vaccine, it should be the parent's choice. It should be my choice. It should be our choice to decide if this vaccine should be given to our children. I'm just here to tell my heart and what my family remembers with it. It's very devastating. I don't want to see my 11-year-old son going through the same thing that my daughter did. It's very hard to see your children suffer, and I don't want to see any child suffer, mine, including the rest of the children in Bedford County. I do believe it should be our choice, and I hope you all understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Louis. Sorry about your daughter.
Thank you.
Hope she gets better soon.
I need you. She will. She's a godsend. Thank you.
Okay, Heather from Grand G Road.
Good evening. I came tonight to speak about something that's going on at one of our local schools. My son attends Bedford Primary School. He is in the special education preschool program. He was born with a rare prain of facial syndrome, causing his airway to be smaller than other children of this age. He also has cognitive and developmental difficulties. He started the program last year in November. We had tons of IEP meetings where staff was informed of his airway complications, as well as other medical history. He is flagged in every single hospitalization he's ever had as having a difficult airway, and it is well documented in his school charts. Right before starting school, I reiterated about his inability to wear a mask. This is last November, and asked on several occasions whether this would be a problem with him starting school. And every time, I was recharged by the principal that it would not affect his ability to be in school. I had not gotten medical documentation at this point. Fast forward to this school year, I dropped Nash off for the first week or so with no problems. About the second week of school, I came to pick Nash up early, because he gets out early, and I noticed he was walking down the hall with a mask on. No one had called to inform me or asked my permission to do this. I was then informed that every child had to wear one regardless of exemption status. I got immediately called and spoke with the principal. We ended up going that evening to get a prescription from our medical doctor for exemption. When I dropped Nash off the next day, I was met by his principal and told that he would have to wear one in the hallway regardless. At this time, I just felt intimidated and paralyzed by the pushback that I was getting. Thankfully, Nash was to school only one more day before we had to keep him home and quarantine him for his upcoming surgery that he had a couple weeks ago, as it is hands. While he's been out the past couple weeks because of the surgery, I've had time to really think about everything. It dawned on me that making Nash wear a mask was actually going against a medical doctor's order. In any other circumstance, this wouldn't be tolerated. I'm a nurse. If I went against a doctor's order, I would lose my job. I decided this time I would stand my ground and insist that his medical exemption, status, and diagnosis needed to be appraised. After a week of recovery, I took Nash back to school. I met the principal at the main entrance and spoke with her about Nash not wearing a mask during any time he's in school and stated that it's in his doctor's order. She then informed me that Nash would have to start walking to his classroom around the outside of the perimeter of the building at Bedford Primary. Again, this made me speechless. I went ahead with it this time, but I didn't know what to do at this point. I ended up picking Nash early up that day, and he hasn't been back to school since. He had to spend a couple more weeks of recovery from the surgery. I have no idea where to go from here. Do I go sit down and talk to the principal and discuss all of this with her? Do I go to her boss? This honestly has felt like discrimination against my son. I'm not a confrontational person by nature, but I am Nash's number-one advocate. I'll do whatever I can to ensure that he's treated fairly and gets a good education.
All right, thank you. Okay, I got two people's names on one piece of paper, Laurie and William from Charlottesville. I don't know who speaks.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I'm the board. I'm Laurie Schaller. Williams Mallon is my law firm. I'm an attorney for Verizon Wireless. So I'm...
Is this about an application?
No, sorry. It's about an action item, 9B, a zoning text amendment.
You have to wait to... Will you get on the...
Well, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, so...
And I don't think you can address things that are on the agenda.
You can address anything that's on the agenda that's not a public hearing.
Are you sure?
All right, proceed.
Thank you. So I just wanted to use my three minutes to speak in support of the zoning text amendment that's on your agenda for the evening to express our support for your adopting a resolution to look closer at the zoning text amendment. This is a minor amendment to your wireless zoning ordinance. Currently, your ordinance provides that wireless facilities located on Bedford County parcels are permitted by right. And we're asking that you revise that provision to state that wireless facilities on... wireless facilities on parcels owned by Bedford County or adjoining jurisdictions be permitted by right. The reason is, you've got three parcels in Bedford County owned by the city of Lynchburg, and Horizon has been trying for years to bring better service to the Boonesboro area. The folks who are here tonight, I wish they were still here so that I could talk with them. We've been trying to provide service to that area. But as you know, it's designated in the land use map as residential. It's all zone residential. It would be very difficult for us to rezone any of the parcels that we've looked at. So those restrictions have prevented us from getting, moving forward with the parcels that we've looked at in the past. The last one being split zone, and the access was over the residential portion, so that one didn't work. So we thought this would be a good solution to go along the Lynchburg water treatment plant parcel that is up in the Boonesboro area, and so that's the reason that we've introduced this zoning text amendment. So we're just asking tonight if you would adopt a resolution to look at, look close, look at that so we can provide you more information about the text amendment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is William going to speak?
That's what she works.
That's right.
Oh, absolutely. One or two people. Robert, I guess you could talk to her about towers and other things that could be coming up pretty quick.
Yeah, we could, but yeah, I mean, I think from a, yes.
All right, the next thing we have is approval of the minutes. And any questions, changes, or motion?
To make a motion to approve the minutes, the minutes of September twenty-seventh, 2021?
You heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we have no public hearing presentations. Next, we have action and discussion. I have consideration of a resolution to adopt the F County Emergency Operations Plan Resolution R-092721, there is zero two, and that will be presented by Chief Ted Dunham.
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen, I think at this point, we're following up with some questions and some review the board members had. The presentation that we had several weeks ago stands. I think Mr. Sharp potentially had a question.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. And I'll admit, I still have not completely read all of the documents. It's still on. In my defense, my wife's priorities come first. But I did find some things that gave me some concern. On page thirty-two of the document, the first one in our packet, that says, "The Coordinator of Emergency Services may subsequently issue orders or proclamations referencing the Declaration to invoke certain emergency powers for any other governor on an appropriate local scale in order to cope with disaster. These powers include using all available resources of government to cope with a disaster." Seems readable. "Restricting the movement of people and occupancy of premises." That gave me some little concern. I mean, I have no problem, even when there's a, you know, a classified hurricane, you know, I think, okay, we highly recommend you leave, but, you know, that's about as far as I'm willing to go, right? And then, number three, prohibiting the sale or transportation of certain substances. All that's very open-ended. Number four, prohibiting and or restricting other activities or conditions that occur in trouble, which may be reasonably necessary to maintain order and protect lives or property during the state of emergency. But it just seems very, I don't see the restraint there. I mean, I certainly understand, and this could be all good stuff, but I also see, based on what I see happening, you know, I wouldn't be so concerned if I didn't see emergency powers being used to abuse citizens of this Commonwealth. And I'm not saying you are. I'm saying the Governor of Virginia is abusing the citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia. But these are the kinds of things that give me some pause that without, you know, I have no problem with saying, you know, recommend you evacuate, you know, or something of that nature, but I just don't see the restraint here.
I think there's a couple things to answer, though, but I think it's not relevant at this point for me to go through and answer those points, because I think we're still very much in agreement that the time that we're living in, eight years ago, maybe this wasn't as concerning, right?
Right.
I agree, and I think maybe the exercise, Mr. Sharp, Mr. Chair, is that we go input from the board and administration, and we go through this and review the disclaimers with the county attorney staff. Because I can tell you a couple of those things we know off the top of our head, how they're to be dealt with, right? But having the code sections attached after them that put the limitations and put the requirements, I think, would be valuable. And again, we're in a different time than we were before. These documents here, you know, have been accepted for years, but I think that would have great value. I mean, it won't work, but this, he just doesn't mind, you know? But I think you're absolutely right, that some clarification because of what we're currently over.
Yeah, I mean, I really do. But given, well, okay, don't laugh, because some people think that I like to be difficult. But I do not like to be difficult. But I just think that in this day and age, some compartmentalization, some constraints, need to be applied to the wording in this document before I think I can adopt it. So that's my opinion.
Yes.
But I don't know where the rest of the board is.
Yeah, I found several that gave me heartburn. Page twenty-six, "For major incidents with advanced notice, are expected to be lengthy in durations, operations will be managed from the Bedford County Emergency Operations Center. When emergency exceeds local capabilities, assistance may be requested from state and federal governments." I don't think any of us is really comfortable right now with state and federal regulations on some of these emergency issues. I did one, this is a brand-new study, right? We just paid for this. I don't know why, at page twenty-one, we talk about a major employer, including Teva, and they've been, they're not even in existence anymore. And then the Bedford businesses, they're nine years old, this data that's in there. So it's a brand-new study, we just paid for, and had old data. Then on page twenty-nineteen, "Recovery operations may span weeks or months." I don't know, I just want, if we're going to have, give a group, and I understand that a group has to have emergency powers, because we're not going to be able to meet at the, you know, that quick, right? But let's limit how much power they have. I'm just not comfortable taking all this power away from the citizens, and that's who we're elected to represent, and giving it to a group of people.
Well, I mean, I think the power is going to be with the emergency coordinator and in consultation with the board supervisors. However, however, again, it's a matter of the language where it's not abusive or could be abused, right? I'm not suggesting that anyone has any intention to currently involve in this process, but I don't know who's going to be sitting here in a few years, and I want to make sure those roadblocks are in place so that I don't set my citizens up for potential abuse by other parties.
Listen to this sentence on page thirty-one. This one, like, if citizens read this, they would be knocking our doors down. "The Chair of County Water Supervisors, Municipal Mayors, may determine and proclaim a state of emergency and impose prohibitions and restrictions by suspending the rights and freedoms initially guaranteed under the nation's constitution."
Yeah, there, I mean, that's a serious issue. Because I have no desire-
There's no way I would have passed that.
Mr. Chair, Chief Joe.
Go ahead.
Chief, did you have anything to do with writing this?
We had a fair bit with the local, so much of this-
You participated in writing this?
No.
Yes, sir.
So in other words, you give your approval to what, because Bansley and Mr. Sharp just pointed out to you, that taking away our constitutional rights guaranteed to citizens of the United States of America, you approve of that?
The only answer I will give to you on that is no, sir.
Well, I mean, obviously, you presented this to us, and it's my understanding that you were the one that chose, I guess, you must have read this before you brought this to us, right? You read this and brought this to us. I mean, it's almost insulting to think that we're stupid enough to approve something that goes this far in taking away the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Bedford County.
Sir, this is very standard.
Standard?
This is very standard.
My gosh.
And it deals with emergencies and emergency situations, and things that come down from federal to the state to the local level, that are choices and options and opportunities.
I would never, I would never approve anything, I would never approve this resolution. And I can't believe that our county taxpayers, our taxpayers' money was once again wasted on something as ridiculous as this.
Yeah, okay, we have to, well, I will say, we have to adopt, we have to have something like this in place. The question is, what's the content going to be, right? I mean, that's where we are. And I just think may, maybe there needs to be some, looking at this with a more critical eye to preserve freedom. I mean, I have no problem with us saying, look, we hike, you know, we're expecting a nuclear attack in Charlottesville, because no one likes Charlottesville, and we're too close, and we suggest you, you know, go south, right? But still, I don't want to arrest somebody if they don't. I mean, that's where I'm at, right? So I just don't, I don't want it to be so overbearing to where somebody in the future could then use it to go a little too far. So my role is to try to keep some constraints and roadblocks and such, that's all. So I just like more-
As I said, these labels, I think, make perfect sense.
So I'd like more, some word smithing, and maybe we have opportunity to review the revised document.
Let's just-
Yeah, I mean, I think that was why we went down, the softening of the language, and maybe we can give some examples of what, because for instance, Mr. Sharp, we brought on page thirty-two, you know, freedom of movement and other things. I mean, it's fairly common, I've been part of these, and other places I've worked, that you have flooding situations.
Right.
To a river or a creek that's flooded, it has impacted roads or neighborhoods, you have to set up blockades, because you can't allow people to go access when you have raging floodwaters ten feet deep that may be impacting people's roads or houses. And we don't have the capacity to save people when they do that, so we set up roadblocks. So we are infringing on, quote, or infringing on somebody's freedom of movement, and that's an example of that type of situation. I mean, and that's, and there's other examples similar to that that occur during natural disasters like that. So, I mean, there might be some examples, we can give some context and so forth, but it's often the way we move.
And I certainly understand, and that's all reasonable, right? It's just that, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of people in Richmond that approved some of these emergency powers who didn't expect unreasonable abuse, and yet we have a prime example of it today that we're all suffering from. And so, you know, now that, you know, I got a flashing neon light telling me these emergency powers can be abused, I want to constrain this language so that it is not, it can't be used for abuse, at least within Bedford County. I can't know anything about Charlottesville, we know, I wouldn't go there, right?
I think the distinction on some of this is the ratification by the governing body versus the executive, chief executive of the state has that unilateral authority, I think, you know, in, I know in Bedford County, the county former government, the ratification by the board supervisors within a period of time and things. But again, my suggestion is, you know, with particular things like that, if we can mark them up and look for disclaimers or explanations or tie it to the other sections of the code, because that would give, I think, probably the information that's all we do, probably, you know, make a, make a, a move.
Mrs. Parker?
Oh, thank you. I think the, what we need to get back to is that we paid sixty thousand dollars for this new document to come out, and clearly has some outdated information in it, or certainly not current information. I started reading through here, and under the population estimates, it says twenty-ten census. Then it had seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven, and I'm thinking, well, if you use the two thousand and ten census, then the city of Bedford, would they have been included in that number? And that didn't seem exactly right, so I tried the, went on the county, on your fire rescue website, which by the way, needs some attention, it's got a lot of outdated information on it. I couldn't, I was trying to find the previous plan, which I'm assuming we had, we have the office every four years. Well, I couldn't find it. And the last thought that I heard was we had a twenty-twelve plan, but I couldn't find that either. So what I would like, so obviously, I'm not going to do this tonight, and by the way, I did go on Google and did the twenty-twenty census number, and the twenty-twenty census number estimate matched this seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven. So that number is not the twenty-ten census number. So that's an example of not being correct information on this document. I had another question, too, on page thirty-seven. It's noted as our assistant county administrator, well, we don't have assistant county administrator, we have a deputy county administrator, and that's in the other box. The boxes are so small, you can hardly read them, but it's in a blue box. I also have a question, does this plan, is this supposed to cover the town of Bedford and Bedford County? And if so, wouldn't you want to mention in the organizational, of the positions, of town manager position? I mean, it seemed like he would be included in this plan if it's inclusive of the town of Bedford in this plan, too. I see no reference to that. So I don't know if it includes the town of Bedford or doesn't. So that's a question. Am I, I can't tell. On page forty-four, it does reference the city of Bedford, which there's no longer a city of Bedford, it's town of Bedford. So I think this document needs to be taken back, needs to be gone through. Clearly, it's not, I'm afraid it's been more of a cut and paste, and that's what troubles. And what, so I would like to request for staff to get whatever the latest plan is, whether it's a twenty-twelve plan or twenty-sixteen plan, I want to see that plan, and I want to compare that plan to what we have here. So I'll make a motion that we table this again, and that staff needs to revisit this and create some, some more comments.
More discussion.
Before you vote, when do you want to table it, too? Because we have to pick a date. So do you want, like, the, I don't know how much time was going to be?
This is going to take a little while. It'll take a little while, and I might, and I may even, I may, a lot of board members can offer a friendly amendment, but it might even be more appropriate just to have this discussion in a work session format, then, because then we can fine-tune all the stuff.
But my point, you're, you're, y'all know this is my point. We paid sixty thousand dollars for this document, and it's got errors. So I, it's not my job to sit here and go through this document. So, I mean, I want my sixty thousand dollars worth.
Yeah, the firm that did it, you know, they need to, they probably need to be doing some of this work, you know, and not in- Uh, you know, and not in the form of a change order, like.
Great. All right, we're going to table this motion. At least that's what I hear from everybody, and, uh.
Well, we probably need to vote on that.
You just want to table it indefinitely?
Do what?
You, you, you think we should table it?
I think we should.
I don't know.
Until, until, until there's time.
Yeah, because I don't know how long that would take, so, okay.
All right, we'll table without a vote.
No, with a vote, because we just don't know how long.
Right.
So we have to put a date on it.
If, but if we say we're going to table this indefinitely, it's just, we either have to say it's going to come back on a certain date or it's going to come back when it's ready, but we can't just say we're just going to table it. I know it seems nitpicky, but it's government. I don't know what to tell you.
I don't like to make this, table this until the document is fixed or revised.
Revised, thank you. Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, we have a consideration of citizens' requests. Text amendment to design ordinance regarding wireless communication facility resolution. One oh one two two one dash zero one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I did, but I think we're going to drop all these off to you. We did have updated, uh, change to the requested text amendment for you tonight. Uh, as your commissioner, we brought all these back to you in May as well, but, uh, section thirty-eight fourteen A-one, the ordinance allows a citizen, uh, to bring forward a text amendment to the board for consideration. Much like this past, the last one from May, basically, we have a citizen or property owner of Bedford County that desires to, uh, possibly move forward with a text amendment. This particular one is in the wireless communication facility, class one, class two, class three, class four, U standards if we have any ordinance. Essentially, uh, this is the use by right, if they're looking to amend. And Mr. Schmoller did a very good job kind of giving you an overview of what they anticipate using it for. Uh, but this would also, basically, what this would do is it would allow a wireless communication facility, a property owned lease or otherwise controlled by Bedford County, that changes the or adjoining jurisdiction, meaning any jurisdiction that enjoys Bedford County. Amherst, Campbell, uh, Bautz, Franklin, Lynchburg, those would be, probably those are support two, but, uh, will allow them to be able to move forward with a buy right project. To give you an example of when this ordinance section has been used, it's been used one time before, and it's used with the Brissette project to avoid having to go through, uh, special use permits for each one of the sites. Uh, even rezonies possibly resulted in a site suspension, section of ordinance. The changes that was brought forward to you, those, the fact that I have, is they didn't want to also amend. The section talks about the approval of lease, of license, to have the adjoining jurisdiction approve that license, not Bedford County. Any questions I can answer from a staff perspective? I have, I have quite a few questions.
I, I don't know how to ask the question, because I don't really understand. I, I don't really understand what to ask. Um, but I know we've got the broadband initiative, we've got all that going on now, so is this for the wireless towers? Is this for, like, wireless towers?
Right, so part of your broadband project, for instance, would have been to get the towers up for the twelve towers and so forth that went around the entire county, and part of that process was that you would have had, the county would have had to apply for special use permits, um, without using this ordinance exemption section. So if that section, we just go straight to the site placement stage, where we can start getting to the tower building stage, get those things reviewed by our consultants, so you get approvals, get the towers up in the faster range. Some of these tower sites, obviously, I think Mr. Schwellen mentioned, are in areas of the county that are very difficult to rezone. Um, majority of the, for areas of R-one, extremely difficult to be able to go through rezoning in the downtown, to something agricultural in nature, to be able to get any class four of the towers that they're looking for.
There's, in R-ones, you can't, you wouldn't be able to put?
As long as you can get an R-one, be a class two.
And you said the property owners that, that didn't live in Bedford County, what, like, you must be referring to a particular property? Is it in Boonsborough or in Lynchburg?
Yeah, Mr. Schwellen mentioned that it is a property that is off of, um, I think it's Hocken Rock Road over in Boonsborough, where the Lynchburg, uh, Saint Treaty facility over there, where they're desiring to put a tower at.
So they're going to use, like, attach it to something, though they are.
No, they want to put an actual tower up, much like you would have in one of the Boonsborough, uh, fire rescue, has a tower up for the Brissette project. They would really do something similar to that, so.
So are you asking tonight for us to initiate this, to go through the planning commission, or, or what is?
Yeah, yes, I, I do think that there's something that, even beyond the adjoining jurisdictions, I know I have been asked personally about the school properties being utilized through that exemption as well, because we do have some of those in some of those districts as well.
But there are in a lot of counties.
Right, um.
This is, so where are, that's already covered?
Right, um. So I guess what I'm trying to say to you is, is that, yes, this is, so this will be another adjoining locality owning. So it's the Lynchburg city owning property of Bedford County, they would be exempt from having to go through a tower process if you were to approve or authorize this approval of the ordinance.
Do they think they, we wouldn't pass it?
No, I think the problem with it is, is that if you end up in some of the areas, like Mr. Schwellen was mentioning, if you end up in some of the areas like Boonsborough, um, it's just extremely difficult to be able to get the class four and the rezoning stay away from the spots opening. Um, and like I said, allow our planning, have them down to the AP, to be able to get that tower's in there. So that's the problem.
Right, all right, just quick clarification. There's a height, class one through two, three, four, so what's, which one's tall?
Uh, four, so I guess you go to one ninety-nine.
Okay.
So one twenty, one ninety-nine, the other ones, uh, I think one twenty, uh, about a hundred, hundred to eighty, and then later they listed, I think, forty-two, zero to forty, forty to eighty, eighty to ninety, and then one twenty, all this possible.
So, and they want to put a class four?
Yes, yes, sir.
So how about if you, uh, instead of a buy right, you did a special, you did a special use, or the S in, like, an R, the R district, perhaps? I mean, not that you'd want to, I mean, is that an option versus rezoning property to add?
Yeah, you could. I mean, I think that there's a, some merit, I think we've done that with the Corps of Robbery and Distrust and so forth, to allow people to go through special use permit processes to kind of avoid those difficult situations where you have the, uh, the rezoning be very difficult to do. Um, we can certainly worry about that. I think that's, I think the, the problem is that we want to be able to get citizens covered in some of those areas. I think that would be the fourth overall goal, too, if these towers do bring property capabilities with them. Um, if, even if you don't want to authorize this one, I'd be happy to bring it back to you or work with the planning mission if you want to authorize you to do so, uh, to try to get something that would work to, if you want to go special use permit route and not have the rezoning route as part of that.
Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with approving this this evening. Uh, I feel like there's something we need to talk about further. Um, and also thinking about the adjoining localities or jurisdictions adjacent to Bedford County. To me, this opens up potential for problems, and I don't claim to know that much about, I know very little about it, so. But I would sure like to, to hear more about this before we approve this this evening, if we could hold on.
All right, I only, preservation question, what I'm calling is, we've already stated that broadband is a top priority in Bedford County. And if we're going to keep that as a top priority, we need to make it where it can happen, rather than, you know, oh, it's okay over here, but let's shut it down over here. And, uh, because we're just going to keep running into roadblocks, and it's going to take three months, six months, all that. And the citizens, you heard them here tonight, screaming for privacy. And that's, I hear that from everybody in the county. Where's, how can it be broadband? How can it be broadband? So I think we ought to do whatever we can to speed that process up, and, and keep it out there and keep it running.
So really, you're just asking for the, the properties that, like I said, the, the adjoining jurisdictions would be able to get an exempt status like we've done, like the county's done?
So essentially, if you kind of, like, if, currently, if I'm wrong, maybe another example of this would be, we had a work session probably a year ago with Runyon County about Explorer Park. At some point in time in the future, Runyon County will likely own, you know, property in Bedford County for Explorer Park. So they may want to put, for a variety of reasons, Verizon or whoever, may want to put a wireless tower in Explorer Park in Bedford County, that this ordinance would then allow it to happen by right. That's right.
And it, as it is right now, it can't happen. They would have to go through a rezoning route to do it, right? Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think a rezoning should be required, but I, I think I'm leaning towards what Tammy suggested, unless that's, unless I misinterpreted what was a special use permit.
Okay.
The reason that I would lean that way is because if it's a Bedford County-owned property, we would be the ones initiating it, all right? So we certainly have to say so. But if we make it a buy right for another locality, then it might be on a property that we go, ooh, I wish they weren't doing that, now we've made it buy right, right? And we would have no way to stop it. Whereas if it's a special use permit, since we're not going to be the ones initiating it, another locality says, hey, we, we would like that, and we go, yeah, you're not going to be, like, this is not going to be an undue burden on, on our citizens, because our citizens might go, wait a second, how'd you sign away our rights? You know, we'd like to have at least had a public hearing. So I think the special use permit, since we wouldn't be the ones making the decision of the location, I think the special use permit is probably the more appropriate route for us to take. Uh, you know, I, and I'm, you know, I'm reasonably confident this board's going to be very favorable, because, you know, it's in our, it's in the interest of the citizens within our community to have the tower. Uh, but I'd at least like to have an out, just in case.
So I think what we would, what you may want to do tonight would be to authorize a resolution for text amendment to move forward with special use permits for all the tower types in the districts. Like, for instance, we, right now, even if you want to do class four, we don't allow class threes in, in that district, in the R-one districts as well. Uh, I would recommend that we just allow, basically, just put the whole box of the area of S's in there and say, allow the special use permit processes and avoid the rezoning process, if that makes sense.
Is that something that, I mean, Tammy, you're the zoning expert.
That sounds like really fair, but, you know, but I want your feedback.
No, I think, I think that, uh, there's going to be situations where there are going to be tower companies that do want to go in those areas, and, uh, I think over the years, the, the amount of people that come to those meetings is, is certainly dwindled. Um, I, you can always say those, especially these permits are implied, that if you can condition them to go in an area and make it work, and you can approve it, but you still have the out to say it doesn't work here. We don't, we can't make it conditionally approval for that, you can say no to it, so, um, yeah, I think that would be fine.
Plus, we can at least require some buffering and things of that nature.
Yeah, you can look at all of them and say, you know, if you have a bunch of people showing up that would say, well, we want you to buffer the offer, then you could always add on top of the buffering they have, through a condition script.
What, what are the eight? Similar things to the locality, I mean, if we own property in, just in Lynchburg, we just pop something off?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, I know a while back, we had, I had talked to Mr. McDeleis about what we were going to do on Tuesday, but about we should go ahead and just let the art of this go into the special use phase. I guess we may be able to reach that point now where, um, we should just go ahead and do that.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one question? This might be more for George, this is more. What about class one and class two towers? I mean, I guess, you know, these, like, micro cells or like mini pop type towers that are only fifty, sixty feet tall? I mean, under, based on a talk of hearing tonight, that's, that would go through a special use as well?
No.
Okay, that's all I want to clarify.
Micro cells are exempted for state laws.
Okay, good, all right. That's my nature.
What kind of motion you're looking for, ask for this?
Um, if you want to make a motion tonight to permit the, uh, class, uh, three and four towers as special use permits in all applicable districts that they're currently not permitted, that would give me a leeway to go forward with that money.
So, all right, heard the motion, Mr. Tuck. Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? He's sweet. I'll come here. His base?
Yes.
His bar?
Yes.
His sharp?
Yes.
His stairs?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Chair votes yes, and I guess we'll say it's passed.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
All right.
Is he on, is he still on there?
Have any, uh, board committee reports and, uh, if there are, anyone has any questions about, comments regarding the Public Works Committee report? Okay.
May I ask, since that, since that application came in, are you able to make that appointment?
Am I able to make a agreement? No, no, we're not.
Um, we can add it to the next meeting, yeah. Because I'm, I'm going to have one for, for bottom two.
Is, is there anything that you want to bring to our attention from the Public Works?
Over to one, one item that will be coming to you for action item, because it's already a hot word for the next meeting, is, uh, it's referenced under number four in this report about the collection system holidays. So as of currently, the collection system being all our drop centers and community centers are open three hundred and sixty-five days a year, unless there's too much of a snow, that will close for a couple hours. But, um, so we had a discussion, um, I have a public board committee meeting about actually establishing some holidays. Like, so I, I think we'll lose in here about New Year's Day, Memorial Day, July Fourth, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day. So there will be six days. Now, in that one, they're all part-time employees, so I think this resonates with the public works committees. They're all part-time employees who are not paying, you know, holiday pay for those days off. Actually, it's a cost savings, um, technically, for closing those days. So that was something that was discussed in the public board committee, and the committee thought that was worthwhile recommending for the board to consider. So that would be coming in the future, actually, the next meeting, for consideration.
Yeah, I, I certainly don't like the idea of, uh, it being open where we require somebody, maybe schedule somebody that's already working for Christmas Day or Thanksgiving Day.
That's what we do as long as it's a day.
Yeah, I don't like that.
And, and I guess, i- if people still, you know, we still have, I forget the number, a dozen unstaffed, um, sites that would still be open, technically, they just won't be staffed, so it'll be open.
So will some of these other events come up, specifically the RFP for body camp?
It's, the RFP is ready to go, so we're, I mean, literally, it's ready to go. We're, we've been putting it out.
Taking action, it just needs to go.
I think so. I think we've talked about that enough, it's ready, it's, it's good to go. The committee put their kind of fine-tuned, touch on kind of scoring criteria, um, as to what that might look like as proposals come in. So, uh, I think it's, I, I, I sort of think I know it's ready to go. Oh, I'll just go to wait till after this meeting and send it out.
Yeah, I, I've heard from some people that, that may want to consider looking at body camp as, as a alternative education site, really, what, you know, what's going on. Um, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know how serious that is or where that might go, but, you know, if, uh, that's, that's something someone wants to do, I'm sure.
First, the idea is time to come, because we currently got a serious shortage of workers in our county, and one possibility for a lot of can't compete to designate or use it as a workforce development, uh, location. And it could even be a combination of things, and the current schools are pretty cheap, I walked through the last Friday. Okay, give me permission. Every civil police officer, that's, that's, I felt for the safety.
Yeah, I mean, the RFP for body camp, I mean, we put a deadline before Thanksgiving to see what comes in, what ideas come in. Of course, the board always has the right to not build any of them and see what comes forward, right? And I talked to one individual who didn't want to, uh, representing a group of people who were interested in looking at that school for school purposes, we'll hopefully schedule a tour at that time, I mean, at, at any time during this RFP process, just like anybody else. I mean, if a developer wanted to come in to look at that school for retirement apartments, same thing. And we'd allow them to come in, look at it, put their proposal together, you know, you know, we'll just see what we get, we can make some decisions. We'll just see what we get and we'll make a decision.
All right, um, next we have board comments, any other comments?
Last, during the weekend, my wife and I were in McCarran, and, uh, on, there was no fuel available to be purchased. We had to be riding motorcycles. And, uh, so anyway, I also, I don't know if anybody else here knows it, but over the weekend, there was a severe fuel shortage in Lebanon. And, uh, the little companies weren't able to provide fuel and throughout everybody, all the service stations in Lebanon. And, and so our, our capacity to, to provide fuel has been very limited since the shutdown of Montvale Fuel Tank. And our prices that we pay for fuel have gone up. And you all may recall, Sam Williams was on our, here a couple weeks, be it last meeting or something, we had a service to Bedford County through the Bedford Co-op. And, and Sam and I have known each other for a long time, and we've visited a lot. And at one point in a meeting, I'm sure Sam will remember, he and I were talking, I mentioned the Montvale Fuel Tanks, and he said, Bob, there's a security issue for Bedford County. Most people in Bedford County have no idea where the fuel comes from, and that's not their job. But it's our job as supervisors and, and as staff to, to look out for the interests of this county. We all do our best. And, and I've taken it upon myself to look at those Montvale tanks. They are in my district. People frequently ask about jobs for, for my district. And there were some great jobs provided in Montvale by the tank lines, six tank lines, and then of course the fuel. And, and sensitive tanks have been shut down. Drivers now have to go to Greensboro to get fuel, which is, is not safe, it's almost laughable. Because when you think about what it's costing to go from Bedford, let's say, to Greensboro, and I've met drivers on this campaign who have to drive two and a half hours down there to get fuel, bike traffic, and come back up and load it, then come back up there and dump their fuel into various spots where they do that, they put in an awfully long day. So, so again, there's such a scarcity of workers now. And to find competent drivers who have a CDL and then who are, who can do a much easier job than hauling and delivering fuel and, and, and less stressful, they can't get drivers for that. So, so we're really getting, getting ready to face these severe fuel shortages in our county that goes beyond what we just saw last weekend and back a while ago, uh, when a pipeline ruptured. So I want to suggest that we bring this up, that we look at this seriously. I know that the railroads, uh, say they're able to actually, you know, by rail, bring the fuel into Montvale and move to the tanks. But, but we can't let this, oh, ignore it. And, and there's no other better purpose for, for that area, Montville, than there is right now to continue to provide this, this much needed fuel for our area.
Any one else? Answer to you, Bob, I think the board would be on board to do anything to get them back there. But we, we went down a few avenues over the last couple of years.
Well, I, I'm in discussion with Elliot Austin, and he's actually mentioned to me that if the board would, I, I'd like to make a motion that the board would support this with a resolution. So that Elliot Austin can, can move forward with, uh, talking to the railroads and get this going. Talking to the railroads? That's what Elliot Austin told.
So they were bringing in by rail?
Yes, sir.
Told us that two years ago.
Are, are you guys saying that, I mean, why don't we try it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. He, he made that offer, and we couldn't seem to convince him.
Well, let's, let's try it one more time. I'm not one to quit, and I know you're not either, Edgar. And, and if, if, if the railroads want to maybe clean the pipeline with the prices of fuel that they are today, would we step up and pay the necessary cost to, to fix that, that pipeline and move it through the pipes?
Robert, could you have us a resolution by next meeting to vote on?
Yeah, it just so happens, you know, a staff meeting about Montvale fuel tanks, I'll have it next week, because we're, so, yeah, we'll, we'll get one together for on the next meeting.
I don't have any board appointments, so that's, Bob, do you have anybody? Somebody said you might have one.
We had said what we're going to do is wait, um, Bob will have an appointment for the redistricting committee, and so will Sharla. So we'll just do both of those on the twenty-fifth.
Next we have, uh, county administrator report.
A couple of things. Um, I think officially, there was, in the year of valid voting, credentials for the VACO annual conference. I believe Sharla, Mickey are registered to go.
Yep, we just need to know who wants to be the voting delegate and who wants to be the alternate. Is he back yet?
Or Mickey Kennedy's? Are you there, Mickey?
Yeah, the person, the usual person is not here against Montville.
Okay, so there was a lot of laughter, who's actually?
I'm not a delegate. I did have a tear.
Okay.
And Mickey would be the alternate?
Yes. Okay.
Um, a couple other, I guess we have to vote on that.
Um, it's really just consensus or if they agree. So if you guys just want to have consensus.
Everybody agrees? Yep.
Um, a couple other things. Amanda's passing out a little handout. Who did email to? Um, I think it was Edgar asked at the last board meeting about what's kind of been the take rate from the project, broadband projects that we've been bothering for a long time. And that's a compilation, that's all data as of the last, this week, about what the take rates, or not take rate, take number has been by these respective entities. All they have not been as robust as all of us would hope, but this is what the data is. Um, a couple other items. Another item that I think it was Ms. Parker asked for the last meeting, was talk about health insurance, RFP and so forth. Since that last meeting, we had a, we had a meeting with Anthem, and then we also had a follow-up meeting this morning with our consultants with health insurance. So, yeah, yesterday's a whole, yeah, it was today. So, um, anyways, we do not have a contract, or at least we'll pass our contract to Anthem. So we can, we're free and clear that they will request our proposals. And where we landed was that our consultants will help us through the process, you know, so who wants to do that? To do our request for proposals for both a full insured plan, which is what we have today, um, with any providers out there like Edna, Anthem, Piedmont, whoever might be interested. But also a self-insured plan as well. We've talked about self-insured for a couple of years and what that might look like. So we'll do RFP for both. Um, we'll probably come back in January, and then we can start making some decisions as to what, what we want to do with that. So that's how, I think that's the best way to proceed. And as we said, at our call, I mean, we just can't, we just can't, we just can't continue to fund, um, these, oh, we just can't keep on getting a legal rate from Anthem at whatever number it is, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen percent, then just beat their heads against the wall and beat on them until we get it down to nine or ten percent and be happy. I mean, we can't afford it. Our employees can't afford it. Our employee rates are also going up the same rate that employer rates are going up too. We've got to figure out something better. So anyways, or maybe Anthem will show up and do better.
It's a shame that, that, my wife and I don't have insurance, but, uh, we, Christian Healthcare people just paid my forty thousand dollar knee replacement, high-dollar back surgery, and, uh, you know, and, and our cost is so small. My wife and I paid seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to pay for her hip replacement. It's, but these are not recognized by the government.
So anyways, that's our plan with health insurance. Um, but the final thing is just, uh, our strategic plan facilitator, Monica Allen. I know that she's met, or spoken with a couple, I bet, spoken with a couple of you. And, uh, I think she's made contact with most of you. If you have time, you know, feel, you know, pleased, uh, talk to them, her either verbally or I think, you know, if you want us to make your comments in writing based on her questions, that's fine too. But I know that she kind of reminded me this morning, or reminded you, that, um, it would be helpful if you, if she can get, if you, if she can get responses back uh, so she can start compiling that in the next couple of weeks. It was just a reminder about that. It seemed like there was one more thing, I didn't have it written down, so it must not have been worked. Oh, I, I was going to say this, uh, that, that's what it was. Ms. Andrews from the nursing home spoke this evening. Uh, I know Amanda spoke with her several times in some detail, and we will, uh, you know, we'll take her concerns seriously. And we've been talking over the last few days about how to put together kind of a investigation strategy as to who to talk to and how to compile that information and look into it. So there's always multiple sides to different issues, and there's always a challenge to figure out where that goes.
Yeah, I just think sometimes people just, they want to feel comfortable enough that they can talk without repercussions.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I mean, it takes a lot of courage to come here. Oh, it does. Yeah, retaliation, legally retaliation's against the law.
Yeah, I understand.
We, we can't do that.
But, but nevertheless.
It happens.
It's still a concern.
Times or not.
It does. But as we are approaching, and I've talked this before, I mean, retaliation of our eyes is almost worse than sometimes the original act. In a lot of ways, the law sees it that way too. So you have to really honor that. I mean, at least from our perspective, we honor that legal parameter very seriously.
It is so, the new media investigator who's outside of, of the county and go and talk to them and say, hey, you, we are outside, your privacy is secure, your job is secure, let us know what's going on.
So interestingly you say that. We, we had a conference call with somebody to do that this morning, and ended up having our signals got crossed. So we've got that rescheduled for, I think, tomorrow afternoon. So we'll see what that might look like, and as long as affordable, we'll, we'll do that.
Well, um, I will, um, you know, Mr. Chair, you'll give me just a moment. Brandon, I'm going to share with the board what I mentioned to you, uh, earlier tonight. Um, you know, in, in, in light of, um, what we see coming down potentially from federal government, I still don't know if we've gotten the official word yet on vaccine mandates for the county. Uh, it, what about the nursing home? Is, is it nursing home?
We, we've got zero official courts documents from OSHA or Department of Labor or anybody.
Okay, so, so not applicable yet.
That's true.
However, um, you know, I'm, I would like for, uh, our county attorney to just make sure that we could potentially do this first. Want to make sure it's legal. But then secondly, if, if it is, then I'd like the board to consider this. And that would be that, um, in the event that, because I still want to challenge it in, in, in the boards, but if any employee were to feel, uh, threatened by, uh, you know, by this or, 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 you know, either feel like they have to leave their job or, uh, or they lose their job due to a vaccine mandate requirement, as long as they've made it clear, uh, you know, to the county or the nursing home that that's why they're no longer employed with the county, then we, as a locality, would hold their position open indefinitely, not backfilling it, no matter what. I mean, that means if Robert Hiss didn't want to get a vaccine and chose to leave his position because of a vaccine mandate, we would not hire another county administrator. So, but, I mean, that, that's how serious I am about this. Because I, we have to find a way to push back. And if I have the legal ability to do that, I want the, our, our employees to know that we've got their back. Uh, and even if somebody's holding a gun to their head, I want to fight it. But I also want those employees to know that we're not going to replace them. We were not going to push them aside, that we would not fill that position, and they would be more than welcome to come back as soon as that idiotic mandate would be lifted. So, so that could cause some disruption for local government. But if other localities in this country did the same, then maybe the federal government would get the message that we're not going to tolerate it. You know, I, I, I certainly expect a lot of disruptions, uh, with respect to, yeah, whatever, I don't care. I can talk right over that. I, I, I certainly, I certainly expect some disruptions, not only with supply chain issues, but from what I understand, um, you know, air traffic controllers, it's going to be, it's going to be a big problem that we're going to be facing countrywide. And, uh, the private sector is going to be suffering, and the public sector may have to as well. So I certainly want to have the backs of the employees that, that refuse to get a man, a vaccine due to an idiotic mandate. So that, that's where I'm at, that I want to make sure that, one, we can legally do it. And then, two, that's what I would ask the board to support.
Don't we have a document called the Constitution of the United States?
Yeah, well, I mean, like I said, we need to challenge it in court. But I'm just saying that that's an ordinance that I'd be willing to support if I'm willing to do it.
So, the mandate doesn't allow exemptions?
So there's a lot of questions still about what exactly the mandate means and what it's going to mean locally, and
That's okay.
And I, I would imagine what we're going to see is there's going to be, not only localities that challenge that, but there's going to be private businesses that challenge that, and we're going to see this work its way up through the court. So at this point, um, my best answer to you is we don't know what exactly this is going to mean for localities like Bedford. Uh, but we will know in short term. So, uh, my response to Mr. Sharp and I think the board's direction, Patrick, and I will certainly be willing to look into any sort of language that you all are being supportive of and the powers, um, of the local government here and how exactly, um, we could do something, uh, that Mr. Sharp is suggesting, if that's what the board is supporting. Uh, but not knowing what the situation exactly is going to be right now, it's hard for me to answer your questions, Chair.
I won't mention the company's name. It's a big company, Pittsburgh. They have a mandate by the end of this month, if you don't get vaccinated, you get paid off or fired. But they do have religious exemptions because of the two people that work for their company that have been approved by it. So it must be alternates.
Right. I think a lot of what we're seeing right now is on a company-by-company basis. It's not necessarily in response to the federal mandate that came down through OSHA on private companies. There's just been a lot of company-by-company policies, and they, of course, have to worry about EEOC and religious exemptions and things of that nature. Um, but what that means for our county government, um, I don't think we fully know that yet.
All right, you can go right over to the county report.
Okay, well, actually, I don't have anything to the county attorneys on specifically tonight, but if there's any other questions that I can answer, I'm happy to do that.
All right, any updates? Calendar?
Oh, maybe. Um, next board meeting is October twenty-fifth. We will have a work session at five o'clock with BRWA about a number of items. Of course, we were able to meet at seven. Last of all, this calendar is our strategic plan retreat, retreat on November fifth and sixth. We'll get the final schedule out for that shortly, and you can see the other meetings that are forthcoming.
I'll make them up in Twitter.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
We are in your. You owe it to them.